Given the fact that the council seems to have a desire to not approve developable taxable properties. Is there any indication from staff regarding that from council?
That was really weird.
Or perhaps our technology guru would like to help.
That was really weird. May I ask a question about some of these projects that include grant money? Is that grant money set in stone? So like, for example, on the very last one, the Hampton US 285 mitigation, it's down to forty thousand dollars where it was a whole lot more before. The other one was the Broadway and Hampton interchange reconstruction and, you know, federal funding of seven point six. Has that grant money been obtained? So it's important for us to prioritize that?
It has been approved.
All of those ones that involve grant money?
Yes. If there's a grant, if there's a grant listed here, it has been designated.
Okay. And that's just for this period of time? So in my opinion, I think we should probably move those up on the food chain of priorities since we have quite a bit of money at stake with grant funding. So, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, that was my indication too. There are actually three projects that I think should jump to the front of the priorities.
So my understanding is that we just need to come up with two other priorities, correct? What is it?
I believe they would like the list prioritized.
Okay.
Yeah. So.
So are we prioritizing based on money or are we prioritizing based on what we'd like to? I mean, are we assuming all of this can be done as listed by, or are we ignoring the money?
All of what is listed comes up to about thirteen million. So there's not enough to cover everything that's listed. So we'd want to think about what projects we think would be most important to move forward.
And this might be exactly what Mike was trying to say. So what's that dollar, maximum dollar amount?
Steph can confirm. Do we have up to eleven million?
I cannot answer that. I don't, I don't know.
But definitely six to seven million, correct?
That's what I had in my notes.
And I would concur.
I had one other question for staff. So that we have projects that where there's already grant money in place. Are there any other categories where the expenditure then would be tied to future grant money? Where it would make sense for us to, okay, we need to allocate the, these expenditures to be able to obtain grant money for a project in the future? Where if we didn't allocate it, it would eliminate our ability to get the funding?
There are no other grant. There's no project that I know of that are dependent on future grants at this moment. Now, if we have grant opportunities that do arise that can further a project, I, you know, that's, we're not going to not go after that grant. Does that answer the question? Okay.
One project that I noticed on here is the Pirate's Cove renovation, which is a sizable thing, but I understand that's, from what I'm told, that's something that is needed to, to keep the water park current and, and functioning as well as it has. So for that reason, I think it probably should be a priority.
So, Madam Chairman, what's our process here? Are we moving projects that we'd like to be at the top of the list? Or how would you like us to proceed?
I think that we should make recommendations for ones that we'd want to prioritize. I think we already have some agreement that the grant funded ones would want to definitely be bumped up. And then we can try and hit that six to seven million dollar mark.
Are we just doing one year next year? Okay.
I think it could be a good idea to prioritize the projects that are going to be completed in 2020 over the ones that might, well, we still want to do the ones that'll need to happen over a course of a few years. But if we could prioritize, for example, the Dartmouth Avenue US 285, two point two million dollar one, if we complete it next year, then it's done and that project's complete. So thinking about it that way, I think, could be smart.
That one was one that I didn't see on our last list that we looked at in April. And asking about that, sounds like that is potentially a bridge project. Ask my question.
Are we talking about on the sec?
Two point two million, the Dartmouth Ave, US 285 South, Platte River Drive West.
Oh, right. That's the bridge over the Platte. Can you repeat your question?
Just confirming that that's what that project is.
Yes.
Madam Chairman, I think we could get, get through this pretty quickly. If you look at, if you look at those issues or those particular projects that have grant funding attached to that, you add that to the alleys, you put in the two point two, that pretty well takes care of the lion's share of, on the Dartmouth project, that pretty well takes care of the lion's share of it. I would hate to see this particular commission move forward, understand, without understanding all the nuances involved and which alleys. But I'd hate to see us miss a year of not saying alleys are a priority. I think that would be a breach of our fiduciary responsibility. What they do with it is entirely up to them. But I think we need to put that forward as being a problem. I mean, the reason being, I've got a skid loader with some forks on it, I'm ready to pull my wife's Honda Fit out of our alley at any moment. So, you know, just as it goes into a hole, we can easily pick it up then. I think this is an issue. And I think it's not just my alley, I think it's across the city. So I, I think by the time you add the two point six and the two point two and the one point one, now we're talking money. And I think we're just about out of what we can recommend. So I'll, I'll be quiet and I'll wait for some small projects to go by, assuming we already have agreement.
I think the other one that I would like to prioritize is the walk-in wheel implementation by area for eighty thousand. It's a smaller dollar amount, but most likely can get quite a bit of bang for your buck for those projects. And also another opportunity for walking and biking projects.
I think, you know, park planning might be, given that, we've had the presentation on parks. I think, you know, designating some money for that might make sense. You know, obviously, if they're able to go forward as a separate bond, that becomes less of an issue. But absent that, you know, I think it might make sense to, to look at that. I also had a question about, let's see here if I can see, the Bellevue Ave, Fox Street to Broadway, what, what that is, just repaving or what is that? Widening or, do we know? Bellevue Ave, Fox Street to Broadway.
It's one point one million.
One point one million.
Steph.
Could, could be a sidewalk pass. Yeah. Cause I, cause I don't think there's a sidewalk there.
Well, and according to my comparison between these two different documents, that wasn't on the original four eleven twenty nineteen spreadsheet. I think it was added. I'm not sure, but I think it's, it was added.
John, do you know what that one is?
This is the first I've heard about such a project, so I don't know anything about it.
I'm guessing. I don't think there's a sidewalk there. And I know that's been a longstanding need.
That probably is a good guess. Cause one point one million, I wouldn't probably take care of the streets, so.
Park?
The, the park planning, there were two issues that I had with that. One, to me, that's, that's a priority for a couple of reasons. One is that that's a big part of the comprehensive plan and a priority of the, of the commission. The second is that's, that's an issue that we've received a lot of feedback from the public about that. It's, it's important to the public and helps to create the community, to help foster the sense of community. The one part of that, that, and it may be related to the bond issue, but spending that money on design and project management without any long-term capital plan for redoing the parks seemed, there was a gap here that I just wasn't sure about. And then the Pirate's Cove issue, that was one that we've definitely heard about as a, is a big priority and something that, that needs to be addressed. Where I, we've heard that as a, a priority, but the, the two point two million for the bridge, that may be something that, that I don't know if that's as urgent of a priority as the Pirate's Cove issue.
Well, and as I look back, the park planning, design and project management for eight hundred thousand dollars was a new addition from the previous spreadsheet. I don't know. You, you got nothing over there too? Okay. Thanks.
I'm just all for it. That's, to me, that's been the thing I keep coming back to year after year, that we have a lot of park space, but the quality of the parks is less than the quality of parks in, in other communities around us. And that's, that's an amenity that we have that would be worthwhile to invest in.
It looks like we've prioritized all but about a one point seven million. So we'll have to make some cuts in some places. Nancy, in terms of recording this, what is best way for you for rank order? Just have us figure it out and then tell you the rank? Okay.
Well, I would move that the three projects that involve grant money be one, two, and three in our priority list.
I think that's very reasonable. Get somebody else's money first. Right?
And that is, let's see here.
It's the Oxford Ave Pedestrian Bridge, the Broadway US 285 interchange reconstruction, and the 285 congestion mitigation study by my looking at things.
I'm sorry, so what's the first one?
The first one is the Oxford Ave Pedestrian Bridge.
With the match?
Right, with the match, yeah. And then the Broadway US 285 interchange reconstruction of one point one million. And then the 285 congestion mitigation study for forty thousand dollars at the bottom of the page.
So that's quick math, one point five million? One point five four?
Yep. I'd add two point six as being the next priority for alley paving. If we're gonna make a difference in the community, let's, let's make a difference.
Was there not talk that they were going to consider a bond issue for alley paving? Is that incorrect?
Yeah, and that is a consideration, but that's, I don't know, does that change our priorities? I mean, the thing about the alleys is, I definitely, you know, I went to the meeting on the alleys and I've never seen so much interest. But in terms of the, the people that it's an issue for, it's a huge issue for. I would say for most of the people in England, it's probably not. But because of the degree of, like I said, the people as an issue for, it's a huge issue for, I think for that reason, it should be a priority.
And I'll, I'll clarify the bond issuance. I was doing some quick math in my head, going through what the bonding would be and what that charge would be on the average resident on a monthly basis, or pardon me, on an annual basis, then divided by twelve for the monthly in order to get to where we were. So I don't, let me, let me be delicate. I don't anticipate the council has already done that math or has looked into that. But that would be a way where one could bond and prioritize and have the project done in quick order. And that way they can move on.
Would it be reasonable to ask, who is this, Public Works, to share with us that prioritization, prioritization of the alley paving? And again, I just bring up the capacity of the sewer system to absorb that much more runoff, water runoff that normally is, I understand, I mean, I'm lucky, I don't have an alley. So, but the alleys are in terrible shape, I agree. And most of it is packed down. So I'm not really sure how much water actually runs off from an alley into the street. But when we had those terrific storms earlier this year, there was quite a bit, cause I saw a lot of dirt out in the, in the streets. So I just want to make sure that when we're paving the alleys, that we're not creating unintended consequences of another problem where our sewer system is overwhelmed.
A reasonable and prudent practice that many communities have, have done since stormwater runoff and mitigation thereof has been a priority is to be constantly cleaning the, all the sewer, all the, all the runoff.
The drains and all that.
Yeah, all the drains and making sure that things actually work. I think that's up to the engineering department to figure out whether we can do that in a particular area. And to be able to prioritize and part of that alley paving project, to your point, well, well put, would be, is there sufficient capacity to handle any runoff or any additional runoff if such an alley were, were paved? So that's, that's all part of a process. But this is a multi-year deal. But to your first point, I think it's very reasonable for us to know what that plan is, if they can actually, would commission the development of a plan based on replacement as they do with roads. So you have the, here's your standard and here's your X, your one to X year, and be able to communicate that to us. Because presumably, if we're ever going to have another development approved and it could cause some traffic in an alley, say for example, a PUD that would have a traffic in an alley, we don't know is that gonna be, is that alley gonna be paved? And if so, when would that be? And how would that impact the plan? But that would, it takes a more comprehensive look rather than just a piecemeal approach.
Yeah, I just don't want to throw, I do want to throw two point six million dollars into alley improvements and paving because I think it's a huge issue for our residents. But I just don't want to throw it at that without making sure that it, like I said, doesn't have unintended consequences. And so I, that, that's, I don't know how, how you attach that, Nancy, if there's anything that we can do or anything like that.
I'm sorry, I can, but I can, if this, are your questions, is, is that the budget workshop that council had? It was brought up about alleys and they're looking, the public works is looking at different material and previous.
Right. Like.
Runoff, you know, rundown. Right.
Like when they grind streets and things like that, they can put down that, that ground material and that sort of thing.
Because of, but I do know the public works director, Mr. Stack, is looking at different places in the alleys that will be less runoff. We, I don't know, regaining the alleys, so.
Well, and that would be the one thing I'd like to bring up too, and maybe you folks know, is that, because part of the, the original thing we got was alley maintenance for four hundred fifty thousand dollars. I agree that that's not a capital expense, but I'm assuming is that still going to go on?
I would assume it would still go on. Sorry. I, I would assume, yes, it would still go on.
Okay.
I don't know to the, the degree it would happen.
Cause that would just a normal expense and be an expense budget, so.
Right. And that's what they, yeah.
Okay. Just want to check. Thanks.
If I could just add, it would seem to me that if we, without consideration, we know it's a big dollar amount, would the council ultimately, in their, in their wisdom, approve two point six million dollars for 2020, given all the other priorities, immediately to say, we're gonna jump in two point six, which is a big number for this community? Would they necessarily allocate two point six? Probably not. As a practical matter, it may be something where that two point six comes out under 2020 and 2021. But the importance is that it's in there, so there's the recognition that it gets it started. Cause once, once you get started on the project, it's very difficult to explain to one resident on one particular block why they were prioritized.
You lose.
Yeah, exactly. And so it would make for some very interesting council meetings, I'm sure.
Michelle, do you have a recommendation of something else that should be prioritized, that you'd like to see prioritized above the alleys? Or just leave it at that with the comments that, that we've made in terms of wanting to know those impacts of creating more permeable.
No, I'm, I'm good at just saying, yes, let's prioritize the alley paving. I think that's a gigantic issue for most, a great number of people in the community.
Okay. So we have two to three million left. Sound it like Parks and Pirate Cove was also a priority. We wanted to move those up on the list.
I also like the idea of walk-in wheel. So I would think we were to put those in order based on Pirate's Cove because of the urgency, and then walk-in wheel or park planning, definitely.
Well, I, I additionally like the Pirate's Cove renovation because that's a moneymaker for the city. And that's, I think that's almost like grants, where we're taking money from other people and that will help the city in the long run. So I agree with that.
Mike, have you done the math as to where we're at?
I was just gonna say that I'd like to prioritize Pirate's Cove and the park planning over that other one I had mentioned earlier, just because both of those are also complete in one year, but we can do both of them in one year rather than sacrificing those to do the other one.
So Madam Chair, to answer your question, have I done the math? Not, not lately. However, I question the, I question whether the Pirate's Cove is truly a moneymaker when you look at the capital expenditure relative to the number of visits, revenue generated. I don't think it's a moneymaker, I think it's a community amenity. So I don't think that's why any council has ever approved it to be a moneymaker. So, but if you want to continue that, I don't think you have much choice there. So, and that's, that's all I have to say about that.
Okay.
I think it's roughly six, six million.
Okay. There's a few other projects that we may want to just go ahead and prioritize or add, think about what order we'd want them added to the list if that funding was available. And that would include the Dartmouth Ave 285 South, Platte River Drive West project. Also, the concrete paving of Santa Fe and Hampton Medians. So I believe they said there would be essentially a return, return on investment in terms of less maintenance in the future with that project. And just trying to see, also the Bellevue Ave, Fox Street to Broadway, although we don't know exactly what that is.
I think, sorry. I think, you know, we definitely need to establish that that is a sidewalk because if it is, that's been a longstanding need. And I wa, I was also under the impression that, that was a state highway? Is that no longer a state highway or is that still a state highway?
It's still a state highway.
Okay. Is it possible that, that if it is a sidewalk, that we could be eligible for some C-DOT funding for, for that?
I would think there would be a potential for having, for being eligible, yes.
I would think so. Thank you.
That would be maybe a question back to Public Works in terms of what the timeline is for C-DOT redoing Bellevue.
What are the traffic signal replacements? Or like, how bad are the traffic lights, I guess, that need to be replaced?
There are, there are some traffic lights that are really pretty old in this town. They've, have reduced the number on Broadway, there's not many left there, but there's still, I would say the signals that are primarily on Logan are very old. I mean, probably forty, fifty years old.
And do you know what their risk would be to waiting another year? Are they like really on the brink of dying or?
I don't know.
It seems like a pricey thing that seems important.
It is a very pricey thing. Signals are very pricey. My guess is they will try to, they probably have a kind of a list of which ones they want to prioritize first, and they probably will try to tackle those one at a time. But I really don't know if they're in danger of failing or not, or, but they, they do need to be upgraded.
Okay.
I feel compelled to make an editorial comment at this point. It is very difficult for us to prioritize when we have no idea what any of these projects are. And I started on this commission just before this last year. And the exact same frustration came up there. I was not, I didn't know the history. But we're asked to do something with no information, it feels like no matter what we do or what we say, it's gonna be ignored anyways. So I feel like it's a waste of time, because we don't even know what we're prioritizing. We don't know what money we have, we don't know what the, the long-term intention of any of this stuff is. And I'm just voicing my frustration that I feel like our time is being wasted once again. A year later, it's exactly the same.
Thank you, Judy.
I, I would echo your frustration because there's many questions that we have and most of this involves Public Works. And a presentation from Public Works to say, this is kind of how we came up with these numbers and what we think are our priority and why, would be help, very helpful in the future, so.
Yeah, I would agree. We've always done this because they said, well, why do we do this? Because in the charter that you have to do it. I, I think that we're, going forward, we benefit from further clarification as to why and getting specifics.
So in other communities, I've actually seen those briefings happen. And it is very helpful for commissions to understand how budgets are put together and what a particular project involves. And so it's a usually two or three study sessions in advance to be able to review. So for example, if I were gonna manage this for next year, say for the 2021 budget, I'd probably want to set up probably three meetings with appropriate staff, call that public safety, which takes care of your police and fire, call it public works and parks, okay? And then there may be an administrative briefing that anybody could, could give in general. But it would give this commission the opportunity to actually understand, okay, so what's coming forward and why would, why would staff feel this is more of a priority? Because otherwise, we're not appointed engineers and we're certainly not clairvoyant and.
Not yet.
No, we're working on that. And, and something about, something about telepathic learning doesn't seem to be helping. So I think we all suffer from the same frustration, and I don't know that it's necessarily just limited to this particular budget.
So we have approximately eleven projects that we've prioritized. Are, and Nancy, do you know which ones, those are?
First, top three of the grant funded projects. Then I have alley paving. Then we did Pirate's Cove, then we went to walk-in wheel and back to park planning. And then the other ones, did you want those in a specific order, the add-ons?
The add-ons are the Dartmouth Bridge, concrete paving, Bellevue trap, and the traffic signals. We're kind of over our amount at that time. I would say probably the Dartmouth Bridge, Katie's point in terms of it potentially being able to be done in a year.
Maybe just because of the dollar amount, the concrete paving of Santa Fe and the Hampton Medians because of the cost savings.
Okay.
Put that first and then Dartmouth Bridge and then Fox to Broadway.
That works for me.
And I'm sorry, Mike, what was the last one? Something to Broadway?
It's one point one million for Bellevue, Fox to Broadway.
Well, thank you for going through that process. Believe it or not, it was actually slightly better than the last couple of years, in terms of having a more streamlined list and two meetings instead of just one meeting of how to go through this. But I think there's definitely room for improvement and to be able to get more information so we can make more informed decisions. so we can make more informed decisions. It would also be great, A, to have those presentations from Public Works or, you know, know more about these projects, as well as what is the potential reach or ROI on these projects as well? Is 1.1 million going to serve ninety-five percent of the city or is it only going to serve ten percent of the city? So that would be some of the other information that would be beneficial next time. Thank you.
So Madam Chair, are we all good or do we need to vote or?
I don't think that we would vote on it.
Because it's just a recommendation?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So I think we can move on.
Just a point of clarification.
Yes.
So the traffic signals actually were built to a fifty-year standard. They were built by Eagle Signal Manufacturing in Davenport, Iowa. And Brown Traffic was owned by the Schultz family. And now it's called something else as of about three years ago. But there's two manufacturers, they both built in the United States. They both built them to about a fifty-year standard years ago. So, given wiring, et cetera, may wear out, will probably be okay. But to the point of it doesn't meet current standards, and I don't know how many lumens, et cetera, that a light has to put out to meet current requirements from DOTs, et cetera. But I think there is a move underway. Secondarily, there's also the move, if you change to LED lights, you save a boatload of money over years of service, twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. And that actually pays for the light itself, but you have to be willing to pay the cost to begin with and then recoup that. And after about twelve years, you start to receive a positive benefit to the city relative to its electricity usage.
Well, and that's just the kind of information that I would love to see next time we go through this process. That, you know, yes, it's important for us to spend three hundred thousand dollars on these signals because LED, X, Y, Z, you know, all that sort of thing. And that would be very helpful going forward. And thank you for that information.
Okay, we're moving on to case 2018-15, multi-unit residential with Brooke.
Thank you. Sorry, thank you, Kate. I don't think we've ever met.
Nice to meet you.
Good to meet you. And this particular topic, we've been working on for some time, and it's basically additional standards or amendments to the standards for multi-unit dwellings and more specifically sideways-facing townhomes, which some people call slot homes. So, we've been working on draft amendments. And at our last meeting in April, we took what were some concepts and actually put some meat on those bones in terms of exact setbacks, put numbers to ideas. We also presented several drawings, two drawings that kind of put together all the recommended amendments in terms of setbacks, transparency, building frontage, vehicular access, and some diagrams on different kinds of vehicular access. And so, at the end of that meeting in April, the next step for us was to create what we call a black line copy of what the actual code amendments would be, where they would fit in Title 16 in the UDC. And then I was also asked to, there was one proposed amendment that was still up in the air regarding an upper-story side setback, and you all asked for a drawing for that. I actually have that now. I did not have it when this packet went out. And I'll pass that around. I don't want to talk about that at the start, but when we get to that particular amendment in the black line copy, we can talk about that one a little bit more specifically and decide if we, in fact, do want to propose that as an amendment. So I think what would be easiest, rather than my staff report kind of goes through bullet points of all these items that are included in the Title 16 amendments. But I think rather than go through my staff report, it'd be best to actually go through that black line copy that's got the strikeouts for deletions, the double underline for additions, because that will be the actual code language as opposed to just some bullet points. Does that sound like a good approach to everybody? Okay, okay. So, starting on page nine in your packet, and I did not include the entire Title 16 because that would be about two inches thick. So I just pulled out excerpts where the amendments were made, and sometimes a page or two before or after just for context. But starting on page nine in your packet, and this is in order of Title 16, so it jumps around a little bit, but it is in chronological order. So the first change is in administrative adjustments. Administrative adjustments are a section of the code that is really somewhat similar to a variance, but the adjustment is typically so small that it doesn't warrant necessarily going to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. And so staff is given administrative authority to make those changes, and there's a process for that. So, on the second page of administrative adjustments, there's one addition there, and there's a table there on page ten in your packet. These are very minor adjustments to setbacks. And we've always had setbacks, permitted adjustments for setbacks, for a three-foot setback, five, seven, twenty, and twenty-five foot setbacks. And then we have maximum permitted adjustments that are associated with those. And so what I added in here was, we've never had a, in the MUR 3C, we have a required front setback of fifteen feet, and we've never had that here on the list. And so I thought this would be a good opportunity to add a permitted adjustment to that front setback such that if, for the fifteen-foot front setback, the maximum permitted adjustment would be 1.5 feet. And that's pretty consistent with sort of the percentage that a lot of the other setbacks are at in relation to the permitted adjustment. So is there any comments on that? Okay. And this is, we'll get, as we go through this, we'll also get into an area called alternative compliance. And we talked about that a little bit as to how to handle that, and we're going to handle it on a percentage basis. But there will be times where we go back to this administrative adjustment, so that's why we wanted to include that. All right. The second, moving on to page eleven, that is, and mine didn't completely print out, but that is the use tables within the code. That is where all the different uses are listed and all the different zone districts. And then uses are either permitted, not permitted, or they are a limited use or a conditional use. And so in that table of allowed uses, we added a use for side-facing townhomes right below multi-unit dwelling. And for side-facing townhomes, we're showing that they would only be permitted in the MUR 3C, the M1, the M2, the M02, the MUB1, and MUB2. And then under the heading of additional regulations, we have a whole slew of those regulations under sixteen-six-one-C7. And that's where the meat of these amendments would be. So, that's no different than we've always discussed in those particular zone districts. And those are really the only zone districts you can do it in because all the other R districts have minimum lot widths and minimum lot areas. So, these are the only ones that would really pertain to sideways-facing townhomes. Any comments on that?
Go ahead.
So presumably, this particular use, a side-facing townhome, would be a lesser use of an otherwise denser area typically. Is that correct? It'd be less dense than that which could be around it?
It would typically, it's typically, those zone districts would be more dense than a typical R district.
Right.
So a sideways-facing townhome is typically more dense than a regular, obviously duplex or triplex, typically less dense than in a true multi-unit dwelling apartment.
Right. So I think we said the same thing, exactly the opposite. So this usage would be more dense than residential, but less dense than what the zoning would typically be that they would be allowed in today?
Yes.
Okay. So it's actually a lesser use within an area that already could have a more dense, more, I guess, unattractive, for lack of a better term?
Correct.
Use, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Brooke, can you remind me on why we wouldn't do TSA, permitted use within TSA if multi-unit is permitted there?
Well, we don't actually have any TSA-zoned land in the city right now. We have codes written for it. And I think, I think when we do, if we do zone an area TSA, that would be a good time to decide, you know, decide whether that would be appropriate in that location. Do either of you have any thoughts on that?
Yes, the TSA has been around for quite a long time, and we have thought about the TSA zone, what it says in there for their standards, and we think that it's maybe a bit antiquated and may not be reflect modern TOD standards. So, we're kind of looking ahead as probably that that may be replaced with something more contemporary anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments on the use table? Okay. Moving on to page twelve and thirteen. So this is another table, which is basically the summary of dimensional requirements for principal structures. And that particular table has, it's not like the use table that has permitted or not permitted. It actually has the dimensional requirements in terms of setbacks, maximum lot coverage, minimum lot width, max height, setbacks, et cetera. So, starting with the MUR 3C on page thirteen in your packet, you can see we've added a category for side-facing townhome. And the minimum lot area in the MUR 3C would be six thousand square feet, which would be the equivalent of a fifty-foot lot, fifty-foot wide lot. And in our last meeting, I showed a diagram of how you could fit that on a fifty-foot wide lot. And then maximum floor area ratio is none, which is consistent with the other uses in that zone district. Maximum lot coverage is seventy-five percent, which is the same as a multi-unit dwelling. Minimum lot area is, or width is none. Maximum height is forty feet, which is consistent with the multi-unit dwelling. And then the front setback would be fifteen, as I mentioned. And then the side setback is seven, so that is new. That came out of all of our study sessions. And then the rear setback is twenty, which is consistent, again, with the other types of buildings in that zone district. You'll notice right below that, that for multi-unit dwellings, which would be apartment types, we did increase the side setback to seven feet to be consistent with the side-facing townhomes, where previously it was five. So, any comments on that particular proposed amendment? Okay, and then moving down into the MUB1, again, we've added the side-facing townhomes and kept the same minimum lot area, floor area ratio, maximum lot coverage, minimum lot width. But the maximum height for a side-facing townhome, we kept that at forty feet. Okay? Most of these side-facing townhomes are not more than three livable stories. There are garage typically on the first story, a garage and an entry on the first story. Second story is a living room, dining room, kitchen, maybe a powder room. And then a third story is typically bedrooms, and then sometimes there's a rooftop deck. So forty feet, you can typically get all that in there. You can see we added the front setback that we discussed, and that would be, the minimum front setback would be, it's a build-two line, and that is five feet and no more than fifteen feet. And then, and that's more than the current zero setback, really because I believe these residential uses need more of a transition from that public space to private space. And that extra five to fifteen feet can give you that kind of semi-public-private space. Again, the setback there is seven feet. And then in that zone district, the rear setback is reduced down to five feet. You'll notice I also changed it above that for a live-work dwelling. It was previously a zero front setback, and that was increased, zero to five, and now it's been increased to five to fifteen, again, to get that little bit of better transition to residential. And then that same change was made in the B1 zone for multi-unit dwellings in terms of the front setback and the side setback. So we're consistent there. In the B2 zone, same kind of thing. We changed it for the side-facing townhomes as well as the multi-unit dwelling. And I forgot to highlight under multi-unit dwelling that it would be five and no more than fifteen feet. All those, all of these side-facing townhome categories have a footnote on them, footnote number four, that says C Section 16-61C for additional dimensional standards, and that's where we've got more code language on that. Moving on to page fourteen, that particular table is, again, a dimensional requirements for principal structures, but that is in all the medical districts. And those are really the same changes that we've been talking about in terms of setbacks, five and no more than fifteen for side-facing townhomes for a front setback, and then seven for side setbacks, and then five for a rear setback. Also, right below side-facing townhomes in that is all other uses. We might need to talk about this one a little bit, John. In the medical districts, a multi-unit dwelling is considered an all other allowed use. And for multi-unit dwellings, I do think we want to increase that setback to, you know, zero and no more than fifteen. But we might not want to take it that far for commercial uses.
Can we add another line in for multi-unit?
We could, we could. On the other hand, it really goes zero and no more than fifteen. It just widens the range that they can go, and I don't know that they would go to fifteen unless there was some compelling reason. We're really only increasing that maximum front setback by five feet. Any thoughts on that, John?
I think that'd be acceptable.
Just keep it as is, okay.
No, no, I meant as you have it, zero and no more than fifteen.
Okay.
I think it'd be acceptable.
Okay. Okay, because you can still bring it right up to the street if you want to. Okay, unless there's any comments on that, that is it for the dimensional tables. The next page is right after the dimensional tables in Title 16, there are a number of additional regulations. And they start out with some of the regulations in the medical district. And so there are some other medical district regulations that precede this, page 15, but I started here with the minimum lineal street frontage. And that has to do with the building frontages of what percentage of the lot width has to be occupied by building. And that has, in the medical district, that's always been 75 feet when that was originally passed. We had, we, some of the projects that we've had have had a really difficult time meeting that mainly if they have any drive whatsoever off the street. So if you can imagine 100-foot wide lot that's internal, that's perhaps internal, that's not a corner lot. If you even have a two-way drive coming out into the street, that alone is oftentimes 24 feet. And then you've got to have typically two five-foot side setbacks if you want to have any windows. So that, right there, puts you under, that puts you at roughly 65% building frontage. So I'm recommending reducing that building frontage in the medical district to 60%. The minimum, the minimum of building frontage, taking that down from 75% to 60%.
I have a question on that.
Sure.
Is it my understanding that we are going to allow for a reduced driveway width for residential?
That is correct, but not likely for a commercial.
And what, okay, but this is, but this is kind of aimed at these townhomes, right?
In this particular amendment, it's actually aimed at all of it.
Okay.
In this particular amendment, it's aimed at all of it. The reduced driveway widths are later on in the amendments, and those have to do only with sideways facing townhomes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And why not 65%, why 60%?
I could see us going to, I did some more calculations on some of the drawings I presented last time, and I was trying to get to 65% on the residential, and some of them don't actually meet it. They were, they were like 62%. So I thought we ought to have a little bit of a cushion on that. I think it's still pretty, I think 60% is still pretty good. People can go over it if they want, if they want a bigger building. But I think it gives us some flexibility in that.
And Brooke, that's only for the side facing townhomes or also for multi-unit?
Also for, this particular change is for any development in the medical districts. So that would include retail development, other uses, because, you know, they need vehicle access as well.
But they, okay, but they wouldn't necessarily, they wouldn't have a change at this point in any kind of drive aisle configuration?
No.
That part's only with this?
Correct.
And then with this one, I'm guessing you'd also want to update the drawing at 60% if that's what we're going with for the next iteration of it?
Yeah.
This drawing, sorry, diagram.
Yes. That is correct. Thank you. Okay, any other comments on that one? Okay, and then on page 16, you'll see the medical district requirements continue with the zone of transparency. We're going to keep that zone of transparency the way it is because that really focuses on retail in the medical district, so we're not, we're not going to mess with that. And then towards the end of that page, when you get down to number seven, that's where all the medical district additional regulations end. So starting with number seven, side facing townhome development standards in the listed zone districts, that's where for the next couple of pages is really the meat of our regulations. So when an applicant wants to go and really kind of see where all the regulations are for side facing townhomes, they go there. So they're all kind of together. And then we, there's some other code changes later on. So just going through those, number 7A there, under applicability, that is, talks about what these standards apply to, that it's for all new side facing townhomes. And then it goes into a definition of a side facing townhome that we discussed several meetings ago. And that is a type of multi-unit dwelling constructed in a group of four or more attached units in which each unit extends from foundation to roof with a yard or drive on not less than two sides. Each dwelling unit has a private entrance to the outside, and the majority of units are attached along the side lot line in a linear arrangement. Side facing townhome structures are contrasted by multi-unit apartment structures or condominiums where dwellings are above or below each other. So we're just trying to say, what is a side facing townhome? And later on in the Title 16, we have that same definition under definitions and under use classifications. So any questions on that? Okay. B, on the next page, 17, is, B is just kind of a standard clause that we talk about for existing side facing townhome developments, and that are grandfathered. And then C is where we really start to have our first standards. Number one talks about that the units closest to the front setback have to be oriented to the set, to the front, to the corresponding street, I'm sorry. And that on corner units or on corner lots, that that corner unit would be oriented towards the long side of the block. So it'd be towards the street rather than the avenue on a corner lot. The rest of them on the avenue would face the avenue. And then on interior lots, obviously, the side facing units would face the side property line. Number two then really gives the standard, and that is that the units towards the street need a ground floor entrance with a door facing the street and a paved pedestrian connection from the entrance door to the corresponding street. And then in addition to that orientation to the street, the units closest to the front setback or side setback on corner lots need to include one of the following two design elements, and they could have both. The first is a prominent canopy or arcade that's a minimum of three feet deep by eight feet in width over the entrance door. And then B, the second one, is a prominent front porch, stoop, patio, or terrace that's a minimum of five feet by eight feet adjacent to the entrance door. So we're trying to get some porches on these things. And then number three, the, we talked about last time adding some requirements, some kind of entrance requirements for the side facing units. And so we're going to add a canopy or arcade that's a minimum of 18 inches deep by four feet in width. And we showed those on the, those plans from last time. So that'll give a little bit of articulation on the sides of the buildings as well. Any comments on that one? Okay.
Would it, does it make sense to have the canopy only over an entrance, or if there were windows, would it make sense to have it over the windows also?
I think at a minimum, the door's the most logical place to have the canopy because it kind of says, here is the entrance, you know? And that's where you want protection when you're going in your unit, you know, you're putting the keys in the door and it's raining out or whatever. So over windows would be great as well, and in the drawing, you see we've done that, but I'm just looking at minimums here for those things. All right, the transparency standard, D. So the ground floor fronting a public street shall incorporate transparent glass windows for a minimum of 30% of the lineal street frontage of the ground floor. The windows shall be transparent or semi-transparent in a minimum of four feet in height and shall be located between two feet and eight feet above the interior floor level. Glass doors shall also count towards the transparency standard. Mike, I know last time you made a comment about windows that go really low, and I talked to our building folks, and there are standards for that. And what the standards typically are, you have to have a guard on the outside, like a Juliet-type balcony or something, if you're on a second floor and your windows go lower. So that's how that would be handled. Building would catch that and and the standard is such that you can bring it up. Those windows could go from four feet to eight feet, or three feet to seven feet. So we should be able to achieve that.
Just a quick. D transparency is spelled wrong.
Oh. The which transparency? Oh.
D.
Oh, yeah.
Just a quick typo.
Okay, thank you. Then number two is up to one-third of the window requirement may be met by alternative methods such as spandrel glass, spandrel glass, a green screen, and I give a definition, a prominent ornamental metal screen covered with vines. I don't want just something from, you know, Home Depot, some kind of lattice, something that's much more permanent. Or a planter wall that is raised stone or brick masonry planter at least two feet in depth. So that would actually be a planter that had some mass to it. It was at least two feet deep. Or windows that are greater, or that are less than four feet, but greater than two feet in height. And those are typically transom or clear story type windows that are closer to the ceiling and the floor. Like, those are transom windows. And then it goes on to say, open entrances to parking areas shall not count towards the ground floor transparency requirements. That's been a little bit of a gray area before, where somebody's got a parking garage and they've got an opening and they say, you know, it's not even in glass, and they say, well, that meets my transparency requirement, when really it's just a parking garage. And then number three was something that was discussed at our last meeting, and that was that the upper floors above the ground floor need to meet the same transparency standards as the ground floor. So really, the hardest place to meet the transparency is on the garage, on the ground floor, because that's where the garage is, and nobody really wants to have any windows in the garage. So if they can meet it on the ground floor, they should be able to meet it on the upper floors. And that's a more desirable place to have windows anyways, for your living room, your bedrooms, and so forth. Any questions on the transparency standard? Okay. Setbacks. Number one is the front setback. I don't want to read that whole thing, but again, the front setback is per the tables that we already went through. But this particular standard goes through what we talked about, about being able to get your street trees planted. And so it's the amount, the amount of right-of-way that you have, or area between your front property line and the sidewalk may end up being the thing that dictates where you fall in that five to 15-foot front setback. Most people are going to want to push it up to the front as much as they can, but we don't want them to do that if they can't get a tree in. So we're essentially leaving a 15-foot space for that tree to grow. And so we would like the trees to be at least four feet from the sidewalk. And then we'd like the building to be no closer than seven and a half feet from that tree. Obviously, the tree can grow over the sidewalk, but we don't want it growing into the building. So that setback talks about the seven and a half feet from the center point of the planting location of any required street tree. So that kind of factors into that flexible front setback. Any comments or questions on that?
I just had a question. Do we have somewhere else, either in the landscape standards or somewhere else, that we'd want to also refer people to in terms of requirements of planting trees in that area? Or would they just do that in order to meet their landscaping requirement?
They would do that, but now that you mention this, I need to check on the four feet between the tree planting location and the sidewalk. I need to see if that's in the code.
Okay.
I know it's in our landscape manual, but that's not codified. So I'll make a note of that. Okay, thank you. So and you can see on both that front setback and side setback, it talks about the setbacks being not only for side facing townhomes, but also for multi-unit dwellings. Number two is a side setback. Again, it talks about the seven and a half feet for tree planting locations, and it talks about corner lots. For corner lots, the side setback can be reduced from the seven feet down to five feet. But again, you've got to have that, that space to plant the tree. We reduced it on the, on the side setback on the corner lots because you've got, you've got some, a little bit of right-of-way area there to work with. So it's not as critical as an interior type of lot. And then number three.
Can I stop you for one second? So in number one, that's where you're talking about, sorry?
Oh, it does include the four feet. I just saw in number one, the front setback, trees must be planted a minimum of four feet from the public sidewalk or curb unless planted in approved root barrier system. We're likely not going to allow them to do that when they do have some flexibility in terms of a setback.
So just to clarify, this front setback, the part of it where it's saying uncovered second-story decks with a walking surface above a height of 12 feet shall be permitted, so those can go into the setback?
Yes.
That's different than the upper, upper story additional step, setback?
Correct, and I'm sorry, I did not go over that last sentence in number one. So there are, in any of the setbacks, there's permitted projections into setbacks, okay? And for porches, they can encroach into a front setback. Uncovered or even covered porches, not enclosed porches, but uncovered porches and uncovered porches. We've never allowed them on the second story for residential development. But I think for side facing townhomes, allowing a, that canopy that projects into the front setback that we're requiring, allowing that to also be a second-story deck, I think can activate the street a little better. We don't allow it in the R1s and 2s, but I do think it would be, and that is a new amendment that we haven't discussed, allowing that, that projection into the front for a second story. If you look at your drawing that I prepared, it actually has that. So you can see currently for a duplex or triplex, you could do that canopy over the front, but you couldn't have people coming out onto that through those sliding glass doors that you see there. And I think that would be a positive thing for these sideways-facing townhomes. So, I did add that in. Is there any other thoughts on that? Thanks for bringing that up.
Seems like a good idea to me.
Okay. Okay. So, the next one, and I guess since we're looking at the drawings, is the upper-story side setback. And this is the one where we talked about it a little bit at our last meeting, and you said, can you have a drawing of that? So, this drawing that I prepared, first of all, not even thinking about the upper-story setback, it kind of shows, I took one of those drawings of the seventy-five-foot lot that we presented last time, the big drawing, and I transposed the windows that I had shown on that, the garden wall, the canopy that I had showed on that, the cantilever over the internal drive. And so, this kind of captures what that would look like. I did not put all the landscaping in because, because I didn't. But it, you could literally take this drawing and match it up to the other one, and it would, it would match up.
It's a much sportier car than the last.
They don't have anything past nineteen-eighty-something nine-two-four. So, anyways. Yeah. I think that's a nine-two-four. Okay. I don't know. And so, it, it shows that, it shows some different materials, it shows some transparency. But then it goes on. The, the unit on the right is just kind of a standard unit, no third-story deck, no upper-story setback. And then, the unit on the left, the regulation would say, if you want to have a third-story deck, you have to move the side setback for the third story back five feet. You see that little person on the balcony there. And that really does two things, moving it back by five feet. One is, it reduces the building mass a little bit towards that side property line. And, and it does, it does provide another opportunity for a balcony. I don't know exactly how much is gained by that. You could see, imagine that third story not being set back five feet. It just gives a little bit more presumably privacy to the adjacent property owner. From the rooftop deck, it doesn't necessarily give more privacy from the third story. So, I'm, I'm, I'm open to discussion on that, and it also gives them less buildable area if they want to do a rooftop deck and a full third story. You know, if we require that. Any, any thoughts on that? And I'm not an architect, so this one looks a little strange, the one on the left, but I thought I'd draw up at least what that concept looks like.
Trying to think about, there's ones similar to this that are currently built, I think over by Corona and Old Hampton. And I feel like they don't have this patio, but still have a setback like this in the rooftop. This, I mean, it's nice to have a patio, but that is looking directly into someone else's property.
Right.
So, that would be somewhat of a concern for me, in terms of privacy.
So, you're saying you don't really necessarily gain a whole lot with that five-story, that five-foot upper-story setback? In terms of, certainly not if you can put a balcony on it.
Right.
And what I did with that third-story deck, because this is really kind of almost four stories, that is typically, that cannot be any kind of habitable space. So, typically, that is, that is really just an enclosed stairwell. And so, it does tend to be smaller, doesn't usually take up the entire width of the building. It's a stairwell, and then you go out onto the deck. Now, if you don't have the five-story, the five-foot upper-story setback, you are able to go all the way to the building face, you know, and look out presumably. But I'm, I'm, I'm pretty open either way, whichever way the commission wants to go on that. You guys have any thoughts?
Yeah, I, I guess with the balcony there, it sort of is inviting people to hang out there on the edge of the property, looking down on the neighborhood. That's got to buy you two cents.
Judy, were you going to say something?
Oh, yeah, I was. All I was going to say is that's way less private to have a balcony than to have a window.
Okay.
No, a side window. I, I just, I don't think it's necessary. And I'm not sure even about the rooftop deck. If you're going to allow rooftop decks, they're going to be so high that it doesn't matter whether they're five foot further back or not, in my opinion.
Okay. You may, in, in order to keep this concept and make it more platable, maybe you specifically say that you can't have a balcony there.
Yeah, and then really, you're just reducing their buildable area. I think, I think if we do get rid of that proposed regulation, it's not to say that somebody couldn't do that if they wanted to. You know, set, set the, set it back five feet and do a little balcony. So, you can imagine, basically, if we don't have that regulation, they could do it like the drawing, but that could potentially be, you know, filled in. All right.
Right, it would seem, and I actually have a friend who lives close to, in downtown Denver, and she has one of these rooftop decks, and the building basically comes up squared on, you know, on all sides. So, what, what happened was they, they allowed the setback, and it is truly just an enclosed staircase that goes out onto a deck, so it's not a habitable area. What they did, what the builder did, was they put this, this nice deck around what you'd see as the deck, and if you look to the right of where this is, that was actually where the builder put in the air conditioning unit and such, which actually is somewhat lower than the rest of it. I didn't, I didn't look at it all for, we were just having a couple refreshments. But what people did to improve or increase their deck size was they did a little lattice work above the air conditioning unit, so it still had the ventilation, and then built their own decks and stuck them on top of the, what otherwise would be a hole in an area that was not part of it. So, I, but that was to the inside of the property, not to the, not to the street or neighbors.
Right, we have seen people put AC units on these, yeah.
Right. And so, I mean, I personally, I'm okay with, with having the option, you may or may not, if you so choose to have that, but I don't like the idea of a second floor, or a third floor, actually, in this case.
Upper-story setback.
Yeah.
Okay.
Setback. I just think you're inviting all sorts of issues.
Okay.
And people aren't going to like it anyway, because it's different than what was built fifty years ago. But that's just an aside.
Right. Well, let's strike number three then.
It definitely helped having the visual and to talk to, for talking that through.
Okay. I want to add on to that. So, my impression of this section is, it's like words, words, words. And the previous parts of this, before this, there's these sprinkled throughout these little diagrams. Has there been any consideration or thought to maybe continuing that trend through this section?
We certainly could. We certainly could take that in a similar way with a little diagram like, like we did. You know, I don't think we want super detailed drawings, but we could do some diagrams for, for some of these. Some of them need words, but not all of them need as many words as, as we have here.
I think that would be improvement.
Okay.
That's, Denver's new code has a lot of that, and it's, it's really helpful for people to understand. That may be what you're, what you're thinking about, but.
Right, and there's our, there's a pretty fancy, but.
Simple will suffice.
Yeah, we can do some drawings. We've, we've been doing them, so.
Pictures will be especially helpful as reading comprehension continues to decrease.
Okay. Moving on. F, minimum building frontage. Says the minimum ground floor.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to, the other thing, I was just actually thinking of the same thing for us, evaluating what, what you've drafted. Those sections where we do have pictures, it's a lot easier for me to be able to think through, like, what is, how does this work and how doesn't it work, when it's just the numbers? It's, conceptually, it's really hard for me to, to figure out whether it makes sense or not.
Right. We can do that. So, in terms of minimum building frontage, and minimum building frontage, remember when we were talking about changing from seventy-five to sixty percent in the medical districts? That's sort of repeated here. And so, that is the minimum ground floor building frontage for side-facing townhomes shall be sixty percent on the front lot line and twenty-five on the side lot line. That's the same as the medical district. But then, I do go on to say that up to one-third of the requirement, so twenty percent, of the required building frontage may be in the form of a brick or stone garden wall that's six feet in height. So, I said brick or stone, as opposed to just generically masonry, because I think what we'll get is stucco. And so, it encourages at least a little bit nicer material for that, for that wall. And you can't just do a cedar fence or something. And that, that garden wall is shown on that elevation on that graphic. And last time, somebody said, oh, you ought to put a little opening there in case somebody has to do, take their garbage cans to the front or something, so I'm just kind of showing that.
So, Brooke, then, in the medical district, it, does this twenty percent or one-third of the required could be a brick or stone garden? Does that apply in the medical district or no?
It, it's a good question. Because the other standard that we looked at does not talk about an alternative. Maybe that's something we should discuss.
Maybe so.
Okay. Why don't John and I discuss that in terms of, you know? Yeah. Any other comments on that? That's really what we talked about before. Okay, so then, G, landscape screening. The, the change there is, currently, there's not a minimum screening area at the side property lines. So, here, a minimum three-foot-wide screening area with at least fifty percent living landscape shall be required for each interior side setback. The required screening width shall not contain pavement. Our code's been kind of silent on, if you, if you need, let's say, five feet of screening, can two of that be planted and three of it be a walkway or something? And so, I'm, I'm trying to clarify that, that, that particular three feet has to be planted. Doesn't have to be completely planted, but fifty percent planted. We know that some of these side setbacks don't get a whole lot of light, but there are plants that can grow in shade. So, we don't just want, you know, three feet of gravel or rock. So, that is, that's the only reference to landscape, any landscape standards here, but there, there's some other areas in the landscape part of the code that we've made some changes. Any comments on that? All right. The next one, H is vehicular design. And we talk about internal driveway and parking aisle widths. So, the in, the inter, internal driveways are places where you're not having somebody back into it. It's just an access drive. And then, parking aisles are where obviously you're backing out of a garage into that. So, the standard is that the, we, we get into some minimums and some maximums. The minimum required internal driveway width, where there is not adjacent parking, shall be ten feet for one-way and twelve feet for two-way movements. And the minimum parking aisle width shall be twenty feet for backup aisles in a ninety-degree parking configuration. And lastly, backup space at the end of a parking aisle shall be a minimum of five feet. That's where, if you're at the end of an aisle and you need to do this with your vehicle, you need at least five feet to be able to start to turn that. Now, if you notice, it says ten, minimum of ten feet for one-way and twelve feet for two-way movements. You, you can't drive two cars by each other in twelve feet. But Denver did this in their code. And really, what they're doing there is, even if it's a twelve, a two-way movement, let's say it's something that goes out to the street. They're taking into account that on developments of this size, somebody, say, leaving the townhome complex, going out to the street on this twelve-foot-wide drive, and somebody is on the street coming in, they're taking into account that one of those two people, hopefully, will stop and let the other person go. I, I, it is in Denver's code, and I actually, I ran these by our public works department, and they were actually okay with that.
Seems, makes sense. I'd rather see setbacks than wider drive aisles.
Right. So, the next, the next standard, number two, for vehicle parking in driveways, it talks a little bit more about locations and, and maximum widths of driveways. We've got the minimum width's in number one, but the maximum is in number two. I don't think we can force somebody to have a twelve-foot, two-way drive. They will be a little bit compelled to shrink the sizes of their drives because of the landscape standards and the building frontage standards. But if somebody has a, a pretty big parcel, that is, and, and I'm working on one right now, and they want to have a, a wider driveway, we do have a maximum number. So, on vehicle parking in driveways, no parking shall be allowed within the front setback period. And then, the maximum driveway width in the front setback shall be twelve feet for one-way movements, and these are maximums, and twenty feet for two-way movements. And then, we go on to say, no open podium-style parking shall be permitted within the first twenty feet of depth behind the front building line or behind both the front and side building line on corner lots. So, what, we talk about that open podium-style parking. Imagine, imagine in this elevation drawing that, that first-floor garage kind of entry area. Imagine they just had an entry area, and the garage was open. It was just columns, and you could see the car parked in there. I don't think people would be able to meet our building coverage requirements, but on other projects, we just don't want them doing that, even in multi-unit dwellings. So, any questions on that? Okay. All right. And then, lastly, I is alternative methods of compliance. So, I'm just going to read that one. Unless otherwise provided for, in sixteen to seventeen administrative adjustments, that was the very first page we looked at, is recognized that because of the wide range of side-facing townhome development configurations, the city manager or designee may, on a case-by-case basis, the city manager or designee may, on a case-by-case basis, consider minor deviations to the side-facing townhome regulations if those deviations would maintain the intent of the regulations. So say somebody wants, has a good idea and they wanna do something, but, they, they need some flexibility on another standard. Uh, the second part of that sentence says, "The amount of minor deviation shall not exceed fifteen percent of any standard or requirement." So for example, if the required landscape area is twenty-five percent, the maximum deviation from that would be, uh, would, would be fifteen percent of twenty-five percent, which is three and a half, three point seven five percent. So your resulting landscape area would go down from twenty-five percent to twenty-one point two five percent. So it just gives a cap on how much you can deviate, not unlike the table that was in, uh, the administrative adjustments. So, um, the ones that I could see, perhaps somebody needing a, a slight deviation on is, um, the building coverage, or building frontage. The, say those garden walls or the transparency requirement, or a canopy size, something like that.
I think this seems reasonable, 'cause the last time we talked about this, we didn't really have a number or weren't quite sure what that percentage should be, but I think this suggestion seems reasonable.
Okay. All right. These next few pages, we should be able to go through relatively quickly. Page nineteen, I just looked at the remainder of the code and I, I, I looked for any conflicts between existing language in the code and what we've got in here. So on, on page nineteen, uh, there was some language in the code about, um, the width of, uh, entrance driveways to multi-unit developments containing four or more units. I wanted to clarify, and that allows a driveway width up to twenty-five feet. I wanted to clarify that for side-facing townhomes, it can't be more than twenty, which we already discussed. Any comments on that? And then on page, um, twenty, it, that, that's where the parking ratios exist. And so we previously had parking ratios for multi-unit dwellings. We don't have, and, and so I added in side-facing townhomes. We never, we don't really use the term two-unit dwellings anymore, so I struck that out. That's just a little cleanup. Uh, but I added side-facing townhomes, and I kept the same parking standard of one point five spaces per twel- dwelling unit plus one guest space for every five units. And then I added in there, under additional regulations, some of that driveway width language, uh, just so, 'cause that, that's maybe where some people look for it. So that, that's, uh, repeated language from the, the previous section. So that's, gets down to parking ratios.
If most of these are four units or less, do we have to change something with that in terms of a guest parking space?
Uh, I, I think, um, I think some will be four units. Uh, no, most of these won't be four units or less. Most of them will be probably four units or more. So the ones that have more will require the guest space. The, the, the four units, I think if they're going down to four units, they really don't need that, that guest space. So then on page twenty-one, that's where, um, we've got a, a table here that talks about parking angles and stall widths and stall lengths, um, aisle widths. So those are the same numbers we used in that previous section on driveway widths and so forth. And it, uh, but where you see it highlighted, there's a footnote number five, four, and number five, uh, that goes to notes in the table below. Um, and it talks about that, you can only reduce those driveway widths for residential uses, not for commercial uses. And then it talks about the backup space as well. So I think it's an appropriate location for it. Um, I did lobby Public, Public Works. I talked to them about these driveway widths. I was also, uh, talking to them about reducing the parking stall size, and we talked about that last time, reducing it down to, instead of nineteen feet long to seventeen and a half feet long, instead of nine feet wide to eight and a half feet wide. And they actually did not like that idea, um, in, at least for sideways-facing townhomes. And the reason being is that, um, those smaller parking space sizes can work better in an open parking lot where, when you open your door, you've got, you know, it's okay if the, if, when you open the door, it crosses the, the, the line, and you've got space there. But when you're in a garage with four walls, uh, of, you know, one to the side of you, one in front and back, you don't have that additional room. And they felt like reducing that size would push cars out, out onto the street. So, um, they did not, uh, go for that one, so we've kept, uh, the stall size the same. All right, moving on to page twenty-two. I just made a change in amount of bi- bicycle parking required to the threshold where you had to provide it. Uh, I'm just trying to be consistent with our language of four or more units. That three unit is kind of an outlier, so, so that's it, in there really for consistency. Twenty-three does not have anything on it. Twenty-four gets into some of the landscape requirements. Um, so on page twenty-four, this is a table that's, um, minimum landscape requirements in residential zones. We added, uh, sideways-facing townhome for more units, uh, and added that as a, as a use. Requiring twenty-five percent, uh, required landscape area, um, and then all the same, percentages of trees that, that the other uses have. And so that's consistent with the drawings you saw before. Um, those meet that requirement. And then footnote number four, that's where we again added in that minimum three-foot wide screening area with at least fifty percent living landscape. Uh, and that, that screening width cannot contain pavement. So that's the only change to that table. Twenty-five doesn't have anything. And then on page twenty-six, we have another table. We essentially did the exact same thing there, uh, except for, that one pertains to the commercial and medical zones. So the M-one, the M-two, B-one, B-two, uh, and just added that same information. I did, in the footnotes down below, add something in. Currently, uh, and we did discuss this, uh, but not in detail. Currently, in the medical and commercial zones, applicants can opt out of fifty percent of their required landscape with Fee and Lou, basically buy their way out. And, um, so for sideways-facing townhomes, you see, you can see here, Fee and Lou shall not be utilized for that. So not allowing that. We've had some that have tried to do that, and then you end up with twelve and a half percent landscape instead of twenty-five percent. So.
Sounds good.
It, the Fee and Lou is often necessary for existing developments, and they wanna do an addition or, or something. Or commercial developments where it's, the landscaping isn't necessarily as important as in residential developments.
I have a question on, um, so this last category with shrubs, minimum percentage of shrubs between principal structure and curb. All these other uses are all at forty percent, and you've got the side-facing townhomes at thirty percent. Why is that different?
I think it's a mistake.
Yeah. On page twenty-six of thirty-four, uh, under shrubs, min- percentage of shrubs between principal structure and curb, the one for side-facing townhomes was different than the others, and Brooke has, has informed us that it is a mistake.
Yes.
Okay.
Good eye.
All right. Moving on to page twenty-seven, this is another table, that has screening requirements. And the way it's set up, it has screening between different uses, and usually the more intensive use is responsible for the screening. Um, so I added in here, um, side-facing townhomes. So a side-facing townhome that's greater than four units, abutting a, uh, greater than or equal to four unit, has to provide the screening, and I added a footnote that the screening width shall not contain any pavement, and that, that applies to all uses. Uh, that's just a clarification that we don't want paving in those screening areas. Kind of a cleanup item. Page twenty-eight, uh, is a section on Fee and Lou, and I just added a, a note in there, Fee and Lou shall not be utilized for side-facing townhomes. And that is it. Now, for some reason, I did not put in here, the definitions, that are at the end of the code. There's a, there's a, um, and that's just a, an oversight. I, I, I know I made the change. I may, I must have not printed it out. Uh, but there is basically that same definition that we gave in that, uh, section number seven, uh, that had the, the, the meat of the, the regulations. The same definitions will go into use classifications, which describe all the different uses. Sideways-facing townhomes will be a use, and then that definition will also go in definitions. And when we bring it back to you, I'll, we'll have that. So that is, other than that, that omission, that's basically the amendments. And, um, any more discussion on it, if, uh, Wade and I were talking a little bit, if, 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 if the board, or I'm sorry, the commission would, would like, we'll, you know, take the next step and, get the city attorney's office to draft up an ordinance and, and move forward with it.
Seems to me like we're in, um, in good shape with this, and have had a lot of good discussions on it, so it seems like a good next step.
I just wanna thank you. This is an enormous amount of work to compile all of this. And, um, from the comments I've heard tonight, very few things need to be changed, so, good job. That's a, that's a lot of work. Thank you.
Thank you.
So when would we reasonably expect to see it back from council after we vote to approve?
Uh, no, no comment.
Okay. I was just curious. Didn't know whether there may be a timeline you're thinking of.
You, you need a crystal ball for that, I think. I'm not sure.
Okay. Okay, moving on. Uh, so, sorry, I lost my place. Staff's choice?
I don't have anything.
I have nothing.
Attorney's choice?
I don't have anything. No report.
No report, okay. Uh, commissioner's choice? Judy?
I got nothing.
Nothing tonight.
I just wanted to thank, um, Brooke and the staff for all the work that they did on this. It was, um, that was my feeling too. It was a huge amount of work. It's really technical. And the thought that you guys put into it is really valuable for us.
I'd echo those, those comments. I'm appreciative of the work you've done and look forward to, uh, seeing this in the future, I guess.
I have nothing further to share. Thank you.
I just wanna mention that, uh, I believe, uh, Daniel is doing a, uh, informational meeting on what's going on with this, this city center involvement that we've had some presentations on in the past. And I believe that's next Wednesday. I'm not sure of the exact time, but, uh, might be a good, uh, place to find out some more information on some of the, you know, what's going on since we've last heard from, uh, on the, on the process.
Thank you. And I don't have anything, so with that, we're adjourned.